Good evening, everyone. What else we? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of Sumter County Council for Tuesday, August twenty-seventh. Ms. Bead, would you please give us your third implication of today, that is all standard implication, that's being established for this way.
Let us pray. I do kind of have a thought. Once again, we thank you for bringing us to another meeting. We acknowledge that you are the one in whom we live, move and have our opinion. We know that the earth is yours and the food is thereof and everything that we have before us, you have made and given to us in this county and for this body to be good stewards of. And we thank you for helping us to be good stewards. As we start another meeting, we want to thank you for the meetings that we've already had. And we thank you for the success that we were able to be unanimous in our decisions. And as we approach this meeting, we again invite your presence and ask that you honor our steps, guide our minds, follow our terms and help our hearts to be in the right place. That everything we say and do, all of our thoughts, actions and deeds are according to your will and pleasing in your sight. These are all blessings we thank and ask in your name. Amen.
I pray to the righteous people of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As was asked with the meeting of the third, as far as the agenda is concerned.
Session.
Just to move the property second, that we move second order, twenty-four, one oh nine, in discussion. If you're in all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Have a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Aye.
Remove the property second, that we approve the amended agenda in discussion. If you're in all in favor, please say aye. Have a motion to approve our minutes from our regular meeting for August thirteenth. Remove the property second, that we approve the amendments from August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, in further discussion. If you're in all in favor, please say aye. The chairman.
I have just a couple of, if I can find them, just a couple of changes, just notations.
Just do the minutes for the white.
Yep.
Mr. Washington, an objection, let you see that electronically, okay?
That'll be fine.
An objection? I have an objection to do that.
Okay.
Grab it, grab it, huh? You can send it to Ms. Blandy.
Yes.
Okay, land use now. RZ number twelve dash thirteen is ruled.
Good evening, RZ twenty-four thirteen, this is seven twenty-five, South St. Paul's Church Road. This is a request that was brought forward by St. Paul Development LLC. Mr. Tyler Dr. Dunn is here to represent the requests about authorization. This is to rezone approximately forty acres of land from agricultural conservation, neighborhood commercial to what was advertised as essential nine, but as council member at first reading, they got a first reading approval to rezone the property to R fifteen and the applicant sent it to that at the time. So it's a request to go to R fifteen and neighborhood commercials. This is the acreage in question, it is on the southeast corner of the intersection, St. Paul's Church Road and the Level Road by the way. It's currently an undeveloped agricultural seal. And this is what the current zoning is. There is already a patch of neighborhood commercial on the property, noted in pink, with the remainder of the property being an agricultural conservation. This request would reshape that neighborhood commercial area with the balance going to R fifteen. It is in the point set range of the patability district. This does require that any residential development on the property and any future plots have noise notification put on that plot. And then if the entrance to that subdivision one would come in the future, it would have noise notification signs standing. So this is just to indicate how it's being proposed to rezone. The area that you see in the red box on the northwestern corner would go near neighborhood commercials, so that we shape that. And then the balance of the property would go to residential fifteen. At this time, the applicant is proposing approximately thirty residential lots. It could be as many as forty if they could get secondary fire access. These lots would comply with R fifteen minimum standards. Apologize for that screen, not sure what's going on. But these lots would all be larger than fifteen thousand square feet. They'd be approximately a half acre area, simply because there is no public sewer on this property, it's only served by public water. When we look at rezoning, with what the land use plan says, this is in the suburban development planning area. It is just east of the military protection planning area. The policies of the Convent has a plan to support R fifteen style development on this property. So we do find that this request is in general conformance of the Convent's plan. Planning commission did recommend approval of the request. Says public sewer service is not available all of these lots, which in future would have to be served by individuals. Have any answering questions, Chairman?
Any questions of this ruling, sir? Mr. Rubin, congratulations. I think you did an excellent job on this project. This is the kind of projects we want in District One. Thank you for your work on this. Appreciate Dr. Dunn's work on this project as well.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Prior to council taking action or executive meeting, we'll have a public hearing, so that anyone wishing to speak for against this rezoning request will do so. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak, please proceed to the podium, station name for the record.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Lieutenant John Hilton. Dr. Dunn and I are the members of the African Fire Company. Helen did a good job of explaining the nuts and bolts of the project. Here it is to say that I live in a community and I've lived there my whole life. And I don't think you've done anyone who was more in love with that area than I am and more concerned with the integrity of the development and the integrity of the neighborhood after the hours of it being constructed. I see some other neighbors of mine in case of here tonight. If you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to deal with them. Otherwise, I'm just here to show my support.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Anyone else wish to be speaking? Seems none publicly here is closed, but second reading. It's been moved in property second, that we approve second meeting for RZ one two dash thirteen, in discussion. If you're in all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All closed. Next item on the agenda is committee reports, because number nine has been removed. The fiscal tax and property committee meeting didn't meet, all members were present. We didn't, in the executive session, motion was made by councilman Eaton, consented by councilman McGinn, and the land use was carried by committee to direct the administrator to continue with the negotiation with industry through the development board as necessary as discussed in executive session and direct administrator to ensure that planning director provides the land use committee with information as discussed in executive session. We have a motion in the second. If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All closed. Next item on the agenda is reports from county council members on relevant issues and trends.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On Saturday, August twenty-third, the Sumter branch of the NAACP LS monthly meeting at Mount Vista Church, ten a.m., started. But the meeting was so good to discuss certain things that we didn't get out of there until after twelve o'clock. We talked about the school, the national funding for the school, and how it is impacting on our kids and how we're beginning to see more gun violence and murders in Sumter County. And people are saying it won't be long before we'll be known again as Merk City. Sad. But another item that came up was the incident that happened in our council chamber on July twenty-third where an individual, and I don't mind saying it, my daughter, Dr. Alexanne Baton, made comments about the behavior of county council members. But she was not the first one to ever make that comment. And after the meeting adjourned, you, Mr. Chairman, went out to the audience and confronted her in a way that wasn't too pleasant. And witnesses saw that, they witnessed that, and they was concerned about the way you talked to her. Matter of fact, a gentleman had stepped between you two because he saw it heated discussion. I'm concerned about how this have impacted on our audience. I don't want people coming here to county council meetings and feeling that if they address county council, which they have been allowed to do in our public comment section, then things that they say, that they're going to be confronted by you or any other member of this council, by you. We have to make sure that people feel welcome and the fact that we are their servant, that we are here to work for them and to make life better. As they say, make Sumter a better place to live, learn, work, play and pray. But if we have council citizens that come to this body, before this body, and have fear that if they say the wrong thing, they're going to be attacked. And that's a bad image we're putting out. And I expect more from you because you are our leader. And you set the example for us. And if people see that our leader is not setting the good example, what are they going to think about us? So, Ms. Baton wrote a letter to council members dated July thirty, twenty twenty-four. And I have a copy of that letter, it's very well written, which I expected. But we never heard anything from this body as to how they're going to deal with it. We talk about, we want to show the right decor of people coming into you. We expect them to conduct themselves in a proper way. That should go for us, too. We should set the example of how people should act because we are elected officials. And people look at us and expect us to conduct ourselves professionally at all times. Sure, there's times we can laugh, play and so forth, but when it comes down to the business, we should be conducting ourselves professionally at all times and in a manner that will bring pride upon this council. So, I don't know what the other council members are going to say because all of them got this letter. And to not have any comments, that's okay. But I, not only would I not condone this type of behavior against my daughter, I will not condone this same behavior against anyone in it. I want you to know that you are safe and feel safe and standing at that podium and saying what you have to say, as long as you're being respected. In which people said, "Ms. Baton, what you said, I don't see where the problem was at." Because there was another individual, and I think my colleague called to Washington, notice individual, because I think his name was Washington, last name. And he talked to you. And his comments to you was not as good as what Ms. Baton said. But I did not see you go down there and attack him. So I don't know what to say. Is it because he was called to Washington, son, you didn't do that? You feel more comfortable attacking my daughter? I don't know what to say. Or was he a man that you didn't want to do that? You feel more comfortable attacking a woman? I don't know. But I hope that this never happens again. Now, if you can comment any way you want to, you have that right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? No reports.
Mr. Chairman, in your own packet, you have the planning condition monthly report, as well as the habitat for humanity. And then I do want to bring to your attention that the Pachau Shaw will be having their tenth year anniversary. And on Monday, September the thirtieth, they would not be able to please RS D by that time, on September the thirteenth. But the event is on Monday, September the thirteenth. Please let me know if you can attend. Thank you.
County administrator report.
No reports, sir.
Thank you. Okay, coming down to the public comment portion of our agenda. Citizens desiring to speak during public comment, ready to talk three minutes. Comments are to be made through the chairman. If you have any questions, they will be answered after the meeting. Public comment is now open. Please proceed to the podium, which station name for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Thomas Boltman. Not to be mistaken for the family court judge, who, by the way, is the same name. I'm just a regular guy. I'm a lifelong resident of Sumter. Grew up just a few blocks away from here on Barton Street in I F U D. Pleasure and thrill of being next door neighbors with my great friend, county council chairman, Jim McCann. As a matter of fact, Jim worked in another state, I worked in other cities. Strangely enough, we both came back to Sumter once we retired. And we're living in the same houses that we grew up in. And we're still next door neighbors in the still best of places. So I'm here this evening to show some much needed support for Mr. McCann. I will add that, Mr. Baton, I was not in attendance for the July meeting where this situation that you spoke of occurred. So my comments are going to pertain to primarily late July, early August. So I, as I said, I didn't have any knowledge of that particular. Again, I'm here to show some much needed support for Mr. McCann. Seems as if lately his reputation and his work ethic have been under attack for various reasons, right here in the last couple of county council meetings. And I'm deeply saddened by this unnecessary part that he's endured. Not only has his reputation been questioned, but so have those of the county administrator and the county attorney. I don't think it's right and I don't think it's fair. But let me assure you that from my experience as a county employee with the treasurer for twenty-one years and having been friends with these gentlemen for much longer, they are all abundantly qualified for the positions that they hold. And finally, I'd like to leave you with some advice that I got from a dear friend and church member, Mr. Dave O'Callaghan, excuse me, Dr. Dave. He was in the middle of a heated discussion at our church meeting one Tuesday morning about thirty years ago. Dr. Callahan stood up like he does so well and he said, "Ladies and gentlemen, praise and public, criticize and private. Praise and public, criticize and private." And I remember those words in my sense. So I think, ladies and gentlemen, if it all follows that bit of advice, you might just make something count. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bolt. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, the chairman, members of the council. Please indulge me while I read my thoughts that I collected this afternoon.
Sir, please mention your name for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Stephen Holliday Jr. I reside in Rembert, the Rembert portion of Sumter County, here as the first of county lining. If my area was incorporated, you could say that I live smack dab in the middle of Rembert. I relocated to Rembert after a military career while raising my family and subsequent family demise of my spouse. And so I wanted to relocate back to a community that gave me wholesome upbringing that I experienced through my adolescent and young adult years. My appearance here today is to voice opposition to the proposal under section G, under section two, fifty-nine G, ordinance twenty-four dash one zero zero nine, as referenced during the July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four session of Sumter County Council meeting. During this session, an impression was given as this recommendation proposal would allow councilor Moore to scheme a method to cover or get through items on the agenda. However, in reading this proposed change, what does appear is evident as an attempt to circumvent an official established best practice imposed in the public, authoritarian form of governance, while also instituting a method to silence the taxpayers of Sumter County. We, the taxpayers of Sumter County, have given up the tax and raised taxes on incrementally by pennies today with acceptable rights and complaints. However, if this proposal is allowed to be adopted when tomorrow comes, we'd be taxed exponentially with gags and muzzles. We would have no choice going forward. It was a similar approach to this effort over two hundred years ago, which resulted in a war between the colonists and Great Britain. Now, that approach was called taxation without representation. While I or no one else is advocating, we're both outside of voices of opinion. We, the citizens of Sumter County, do not and will not stand for any means to silence our voices. Council members, we deserve better. You can fix how to move your agenda items. You have the tools, technology, intelligence and experience. In fact, your reason and rationale to remove other comments from your agenda is self-defeating. So far, two meetings have resulted in a waste of time and taxpayers' money by introducing a selfish, unjustifiable reason to remove public comment from the agenda without producing any qualitative analysis or data. We won't get into your proposal to rein unchained and have taxpayers silenced. Stop wasting time and fighting for your own selfish agenda and effort conducting the business to move this comment forward. You have our support. Don't lose the momentum. Take advantage of the time. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Mara Washington. I would just like to say that I'm not aware of what was said or what heard at the meeting. Specifically, I did see a report on WLTX about the incident. And I myself can say that, you know, I've witnessed the chairman of this body make a D-line down off the podium that night, but I did not see any interaction after that because I was waiting to talk to the administrator. But I will say that it is, the behavior in this council, perhaps the reason why this ordinance came about, has not been acceptable. And I will concur with Councilman Baton that it starts with the leadership. Others commented to me about even the way that meeting was closed out, that it was not officially closed out. No one else was given an opportunity to make comments after Dr. Baton made her comments. Several people in attendance that night asked me, you know, why did he close the session? And I think, I didn't have an answer for it. I hope that this council is on a good road to mending actions that are not transparent. It's one thing, you know, to be friends and friendly with one another, but that should not override the business. And having clarity is important. And I don't know if that's a problem because maybe, you know, twenty, fifteen, ten years is maybe, maybe this council should even consider term limits. Because I believe when you do something for such a long time that you don't have a clear view of what new ideas or options are available. Much like with, you know, some of the, a lot of things that the South Carolina Association of counties recommends that counties do, we're not doing. I.e., they recommend that you have a workshop yearly to discuss protocol for procurement and to review and to make sure that we are adhering to our procurement guidelines. I have not raised that issue, but that issue has not gone away. There's still been no real explanation, but someone turned to an emergency ordinance. But I hope that you will sit down and come up with procedures that will help to operate better.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Anyone else?
Y'all was better. The people will never be silenced. Just take that into consideration. You can pass whatever the orders you want. The people will not be silenced without the right to speak at the vote. And when Sumter County has equal right to speak, if there's a thousand of them outside, you better get your no notes. The late great Marcus Lee King once called to Mike Wallace in an interview, "A riot is the place of the unheard." So if you try to limit the people's right to speak, their feelings, their hearts, y'all have the tools. The community has tools. That is a tool. Don't ever do anything to limit our voice. Because we will not allow that to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What else? What else?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council. I'm in the ring, I'm at the hotel. And um I was here a couple of weeks ago. I I missed all the people. But I had to agree that people need to know what's happening. Nothing that's done here except snippets that reporters give escapes this room. Nobody knows who spoke, how they felt, or anything else. And with all that's going on with the council, I feel like some of the people need to be interviewed. And it posted in the link. Everybody's not going to come down here. Some people are afraid. And then some people don't read. Either a misconception of laziness or word of mouth works good too. And if you interview some of the people that speak down here, it might be easier to understand how people really feel. And everybody outside of this room knows who said something. And you really feel like that? Did that really happen? But I can review you. Not review. Interview people and have it posted. So people know what's happening. Even if, like I said, it's word of mouth. It wouldn't be out how people feel. Because we can't be silent. And there's no reason to have a riot. There's no reason to get physical or violent or even emotional. So people will know what's going on in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else? Public comment is closed. Move the property second that we adjourn.